... Fifty-one seven officer on call break. Please make stand for a chair in the place you would like.
Welcome to Warren County Commission Meeting, due order. We'll now turn it over. Mr. Gary Prater is sick tonight and not able to be here. Commissioner Pratt Hillis is going to handle our invocation. Please allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight we have Mr. Kason Reed. He's going to lead us in prayer and the pledge. He is an upcoming ninth grader at Warren County High School. He spent his elementary years at the Morrison Elementary. He's an active member of the Maple Special Games where he plays basketball. And Kason loves to introduce the players at the Morrison Elementary game. And he's the son of Corey Reed. And he's just a great all-around young man. Kason?
Good day. All right, everyone, by your heads, a step forward. There were we going to do is pray even though we're just one. So thank you for all the blessings that you do for us and all of us in the world. Just want so you can keep up with that form, you're good for us. Hope he gets better and hope for Gary to get better too. The Lord just wants I thank you for being us here today and we all really appreciate. And keep all those singing out in your neck. All right. I'm blessed to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is united, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now ask the Department of Calhoun.
Michael Bell?
Here.
Carol Holden?
Here.
Carly Graham?
Here.
Charles Dodson?
Here.
Ray Deanland?
Here.
Here.
Brad Hillis?
Here.
Jay Thomas? Scott Kelly?
Here.
Here.
Gary Martin?
Here.
Kenny Moffitt?
Here.
Alan McRugley? Gary Prager? Chris Rippey?
Here.
Christie Ross?
Here.
Scott Ruble?
Here.
Tommy Savage?
Here.
Douglas Smith?
Here.
Philip South?
Here.
Paul Taylor? Ray Wilcher?
Here.
We have eighteen present tonight. We move on to item number five, adoption of our document.
A white card motion to accept the document presented.
Say, we got a motion, Mr. Bell, and a second from Mr. Dodson. Any additions to the document tonight? Ain't none? All those in favor of approving our document for tonight, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass it unanimously. We'll move on to the reading of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, let me motion with expense of reading, accept or miss presenting.
Got a motion by Mr. Anglin and a second by Mr. Savage to accept the minutes. It's written in the expense of the reading. Any additional corrections to the minutes? Ain't none? All those in favor of approving our minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass it unanimously. We've approved our document for the night. If anybody wants to have public comment on what's on the document tonight, you need to see Mr. Hillis and sign up while we're getting our departmental reports. We move on to item number seven. Item Control, Mr. Peter Tutt.
Good evening, Commissioners. Does anybody have any questions about this quarter's report from item number two?
I got a motion by Mr. Welcher and a second by Mr. Staff. Any questions about the report, get out of control. I do want to report that we've got a roof on the U.A.N. Control Building and TCAD is getting ready to start laying some block inside for the kennels today. We're figuring out the material list and they will start showing up. Any more questions, Mr. Tutt? And we do have, Mr. Tutt, you might want to tell them about the beagles that we have now passed away.
Yes, Mr. Charles Hammersmith passed away a week ago, this past Saturday night. And he was an avid rabbit hunter and he, we picked up seventeen beagles. And we've adopted two of them out. So we've got adult dogs down to five-month-old puppies that, they're good-looking, good-looking dogs. If anybody's looking for a beagle hound, we got them.
And so we just won't let the public out there know, come down there and get you a beagle hound. Adoptments are free right now.
Get them trained by hunting season.
Yeah, go train. Any more questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like this board, just thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions? Ain't none? All those in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass it unanimously. We'll move on to the Health Department.
Good evening, you also have to report if you have any questions.
Got a motion, Mr. Hillis. A second by Mr. Glenn. Any questions about the Health Department report?
Mr. Chairman.
Right here.
Why was the Health Department closed today?
Okay. Um, we have had some issues with mice and, um, mice.
Okay.
And we've had to put some extra poison out to try to take care of that. And we had a deep cleaning done today and yesterday to make sure we didn't have any on the nest left.
Okay. I come through and I thought, well, this is not a holiday, it's a closed. I've got, what's the problem? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? Ain't none? All those in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass it unanimously.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the IDV report.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you should have the report out here if you have any questions.
Got a motion, Mr. Dodson. Now here, second.
Second.
Got a second, Mr. Ruble. Any questions about the IDV report? Ain't none? All those in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass it unanimously. Thank you. Uh, the Planning Commission, Mr. Romley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You got the Planning Commission report that was in your package. If there's any questions that you have on that, Commissioner Glenn and I will do our best to try to find an answer. And I move to approve.
Got a motion, now here, second, got a second, Mr. Glenn. Any questions about the Planning Commission report? Ain't none? All those in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass it unanimously. We'll move on to item number seven, Judicial Commission. Mr. David Weyers.
Ladies and gentlemen on the court, we got a quarterly report, a law review report, having laws, legal systems, statistics, the common thing, the opposite of each other. If you've got any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them for you.
Anything? Got a motion by Mr. Anglin, a second by Mr. Savage. Any questions about the Judicial Commission report? Ain't none? All those in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass it unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen. Uh, Mr. Cott, the financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen on the court, you have our report. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them at this time.
Please accept.
We got a motion by Mr. Ruble, a second by Mr. Staff. Any questions about the finance report? If there's no questions on the financial report, all those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass it unanimously. We'll now move into our committee reports, item number eight, Budget Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Finance has nothing to report at this time.
Billman Grounds?
Billman Grounds has nothing to report at this time.
Uh, Eton in Agriculture?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next meeting will be August fifth, oh, August the fifth at five o'clock. Thank you.
Uh, Education, Ms. Marlene Brett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next, uh, Education Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, August the twenty-fifth at four o'clock P.M. Prior to the School Board meeting. However, there is a School Board meeting scheduled for this Thursday, July the twenty-fourth at five P.M. This year's new school budget had money set aside for school capital projects. Um, our school board has currently, is currently having an upland design group, draw plans and give some estimates to enlarge the school cafeteria as one of those potential, possible capital projects. The first day of school is quickly approaching. Um, Tuesday, August the fifth, that's just two weeks from tomorrow. Be our first full day for students. To get ready, many in-house changes have been made. Um, school coaches have, coaches, meaning educational coaches, have been placed at every school. Um, there's still vacancies open for both the certified and non-certified positions. And I know you heard Russ, Durham Bus Services is currently hiring school bus drivers. And last, but not the coolest, our first home football game is Friday night, August the twenty-second. And it's gonna be hot.
All right, thank you, Marlon. Uh, Financial Management has nothing to report at this time. We'll move right on to Health and Welfare. Mr. Welcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as you can see from the packet, our population stays right around seventy-four. Uh, we did extend the free adoption to December tenth. Uh, things like that's helping us with movement on our animals. And at this point, we still have no prospects for anyone that we euthanize our animals that we deemed unadoptable. So we'll continue looking in that area.
Thank you. Uh, Highway and Bridge, Mr. Prager's not here. Mr. Anglin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the bowling crew is out, so if you see them out with tractors, please be aware of them on the side of the roads. They're all over the county. I believe there were some out our way to the Inverly College, maybe in the Vile area. But, uh, just watch out for them, they're doing a good job. This year, we've got such a good growing season with all the rain and the sunshine, so it's hard to keep up with it. If your road's not been done, we're getting to it. So, but other than that, that's all we have to report.
Uh, Policy Personnel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Policy Personnel met at the liberal museum on July third. Everybody needs to go out and visit sometime. It's, it's a lot of history right there. But we had our meeting there and our, we got reports from the Judicial Commissioner and the Coast Department. And our next meeting will be August the seventh, and it will be here at the Administrative Building. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Safety?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, our EMS is busy, but doing well at this time. And our sanitation department is doing great. We'll have a little more update on that a little later in our commission meeting. Thank you.
County Correctional Partnership, Mr. Anglin?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Uh, today, population of jails, two-hundred-and-twenty-four, hundred-and-seventy-six men, forty-eight women, twelve PDLC and six parole violations. Just to touch on a couple of things going on at the jail, if you don't know it already, there, uh, we have some educational programs. Uh, we've just got started our construction program. We've hired a gentleman to do that, and that is being kicked off now, maybe about three weeks. And that's going really, really well. And, uh, if all goes good, hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have a auto mechanics class going. So, you know, we have welding and we have precision measurement, just different things. And so, uh, we're trying to get these guys, we're, and ladies as far as that goes. So when they do get out of jail, that, uh, they'll have an educational background, they can go to work. So we've got avenues, especially with the construction program. The gentleman's teaching that, he has, uh, got avenues to put people to work. So that's gonna be, it's gonna be a good thing. So, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
Do we have any comments about the comments? There's no public comment tonight. We'll move right on to the new business then. And the first item we have on the agenda is Commissioner Appointment District Three. I will read you the procedure we will be going to do from our attorney, Mr. Robert Ratcher. Nominating and voting procedure. Nominations may come from members of the County Commission, County Executive, the public. General rules. Nominations do not require second. Commissioners may make multiple nominations. Nominations may be made by members of the public, must be subsequently affirmed by the nomination of a member of the County Commission and/or County Executive. Any person nominated by the public must be present at the vote in verbatim form of their willingness to serve in the role if elected. Nominations, the process begins by the Chair announcing any written nominations which may have arrived prior to the meeting, if any. Then the Chair will open the floor for verbal nominations from the public, if any. Then the Chair shall open the floor for nomination for members of the County Commission. Each nominee must be present and must be recognized to give a affirmation that they are willing to serve should they win the vote. Nominees who are nominated and arriving prior to the vote may affirm their willingness to serve by written letter to the County Executive prior to the meeting. Once all nominations are in, the Chair then entertains a motion to cease nominations and proceed to vote. The voting procedure will be used in that. All nominees shall be organized in alphabetical order by last name. The list of all nominees shall be read to the floor prior to the vote. Each nominee shall receive a roll call vote. Commissioners shall be called in order by name, lock their name from A to Z for the first vote, Z to A for the following vote. Commissioners shall receive only one affirmative vote regardless of the number of nominees. Abstentions and passing votes are counted as negatives. The nominee with the highest number of affirmative votes shall fill the vacant seat. If there is a tie amongst the two nominees receiving the highest number of votes, then the two nominees receiving the highest number of votes shall enter into another round of votes with only their two names as nominees. To be successful, a nominee must have a majority vote. In this case, it will be twelve votes. And the unusual scenario where candidates with the highest number of votes does not receive a majority of votes, then a final roll call is held for the one nominee who had the highest number of votes in the previous vote. This is for the purpose of electing the nominee with a majority, which is required under Tennessee law. If there is a tie among the two nominees receiving the highest number of votes, then the two nominees receiving the highest number of votes shall enter into another round of votes only their two names as nominees. So at this time, we have no written nominations. So at this time, I will open the floor to the public. If anybody from the public wants to come forward to nominate somebody for District Three Commissioner, which will then have to have a Commissioner accept that nomination. Does anybody want to nominate anybody from the floor? If there's nobody willing to nominate anybody from the floor, I will now open the County Commission up for nominations. And before we start, does anybody got any questions? All right, the Commissioner?
There may be a little confusion, I sense some, as to why we only need twelve votes, if you will clarify that.
Yeah, because we're only a body of twenty-three right now that Casey has stepped down. And of course, twelve is majority and twenty-four is majority. So it just depends on the term of tenure. Yes?
I would ask that whoever makes a nomination, it is a nomination, not an endorsement. Don't say anything else.
Yes, that's correct, just the nomination. We'll have some discussion and then I may let them talk while we get our nominees together. All right, now please open the floor for nominations.
Uh, I'd like to nominate Stacy Hart.
All right. Chris Rippey nominates Stacy Hart.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Ken Martin.
We have Mr. Ken Martin. Both of those, are y'all present? Mr. Martin, and will y'all accept the position? Okay. Do we have any more nominations? Any more nominations from any of the Commissioners? I'll accept the motion, the nomination ceases.
So, Lou.
I got a motion, Mr. Ruble.
Thank you.
Got a second from Mr. Dodson. All those in favor of the nomination cease, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass it unanimously. At this time, I would ask if either one of those wants to come up and give about two minutes for them to explain why they would want to have this seat. Ms. Hart, do you want to help her?
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to be here and for the nomination. Um, I am, I was born and raised here in Warren County and moved to Marcus, Maryland. And when my husband and I decided to move back, I told him that I wanted to get involved and participate in local government because I wanted to make sure that we can turn it to that. Um, and so what I, what I did when I came in was I got involved with the local party here and worked with them and helped with the last election cycle. And then I have now taken over the ladies' group for my party and have been doing that for a couple of years. And so, um, this is just, this is the way that I saw me growing and continuing to serve my community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Martin, Mr. Ken Martin?
Um, my name is Ken Martin. All of most of you know that I worked with you for several years, I was elected four times. Did the best job I could, but I moved out of the district and did not want to run against either one of the two Commissioners that were in that district, and I did not run. Uh, but this opportunity's come up and I think I'd like to try it again. I did the best job I could. It's an honor to have been asked to nominate to be a third District Commissioner once more. Thank you.
All right. Does anybody have any questions before we vote? Questions, any questions? Put the names now back forward, please. All right, the first vote, you'll be voting for Stacy Hart. And you have one yes vote, is all you have. So, is everybody ready? Vote. Any questions? Ain't none? Now let's call Calhoun.
Michael Bell?
Pass.
Carol Holden?
Pass.
Carly Graham?
Pass.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Brad Deanland?
Pass.
Steve Quinn?
Pass.
Brad Hillis?
Pass.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Pass.
Gary Martin?
Pass.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Pass.
Scott Ruble?
Pass.
Tommy Savage?
Pass.
Douglas Smith?
Pass.
Philip South?
Yes.
Ray Wilcher?
Yes.
Any more change to vote?
Six yes and twelve pass, which is considered a no. All right, now we will start from the bottom up and only add one yes vote to that. Yes, yes. We start from the bottom up, all the measures.
Ray Wilcher?
Pass.
Philip South?
Pass.
Douglas Smith?
Let me verify, are we, are we still voting on Mr. Hart or Mr. Martin?
This is Mr. Martin, Mr. Ken Martin.
Okay, yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
No.
Kenny Moffitt?
Pass.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
No.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Brad Deanland?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Pass.
Carly Graham?
Yes.
Carol Holden?
Yes.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
All right, we have twelve yes and six pass. So that means Mr. Ken Martin is elected to the County Commission to serve in the third District. We appreciate him voting on, stepping up. All right, uh, the next item on the agenda is the committee appointments. And I would love to, for somebody, I have the authority to appoint them to committee, and I will appoint them to same committees that Ms. Casey Owens was on, Health and Welfare and County Corrections. So I'd entertain a motion to that. Got a motion, Mr. Bell, a second, Mr. Prabhan. All those in favor of those appointments, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass it unanimously. Now we'll move on to Mr. Cott. I'll let you explain to RJ the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the contract in your packet is contracts between Metro Government and RJ Young. What we're doing is extending that contract as we're simply piggybacking that, making it available to all county departments. So it would allow us to buy as if we were the department of Metro. It gives us the buy power of Metro without us having to go out and be, it gives us a better rate.
Got a motion, Mr. Bell? A second by Mr. Kevin. Any questions about the five-year RJ Young contract? If there's no questions, I'll have clerk Calhoun.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carol Holden?
Yes.
Carly Graham?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Ray Deanland?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Douglas Smith?
Yes.
Philip South?
Yes.
Ray Wilcher?
Yes.
Any more change to vote?
Eighteen. Uh, item number three passes eighteen to zero. We move on to item number four. I'll let Mr. Cott explain this resolution. This is going to be a revision to a resolution we passed in May with the addition of the bottom section that reads therefore be a further resolved and which is the school federal projects fund to be budget approved for separate projects within the fund by the Tennessee Department of Education. This, this modification extends the waiver of management of that budget that this committee previously always used. It gives that, um, it puts that also on Board of Education. So the Board of Education no longer has to make amendments to those budgets because those budgets are better controlled and monitored by the State Department of Education.
Any more questions clear? Got a motion, Mr. Staff, a second by Mr. Christie Ross. Anybody have any questions about the resolution? Ain't none? Now let's call Calhoun.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carol Holden?
Yes.
Carly Graham?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Ray Deanland?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Douglas Smith?
Yes.
Philip South?
Yes.
Ray Wilcher?
Yes.
Any more change to vote?
Resolution number four passes eighteen to zero. We move on to item number five, G F one. We move on to item number five, GF one and AF one, twenty-five, twenty-six. Mr. Cotton?
These, uh, this pair of amendments is a correction to the consolidated budget. These items all pass through budget finance, but these changes were not reflected in the consolidated budget.
Uh, we've got a motion from Mr. England, he's got here a second. He's got a second from Mr. Elliott. Any questions about the amendments? Anybody have any questions? Big none, I'll ask Clerk Call Rupp.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Carly Graham.
Yes.
Charles Dotson.
Yes.
Brad England.
Yes.
Steve Quinn.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip South.
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Any one want to change their vote?
Item number five passes eighteen to zero. We'll move on to item number six, GF two, twenty-five, twenty-six. Mr. Scott Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a grant that Santasia Park will be receiving, it has its respective committees, and I think Director Roberts will speak on that essentially. We get a motion, and I so move.
We've got a motion by Mr. Ruble, and a second from Mr. Bell. Mr. Roberts, if you wouldn't come up and explain what a good job you did for the Santasia Park.
I don't know about that.
You're a good one, we're proud of you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the court. I'll answer any questions on this grant. I can explain it first, if you don't have no questions, now that we'll get into the questions. On this grant, this is $495,000 that is going to be the total budget cost. The county's match on this is forty-nine thousand five hundred. We budgeted that in this new fiscal year on the site developments. We have our match ready to go. Budget finance and financial management has established the total budget. If y'all hold on this and pass this tonight, this building will be seventy-two foot deep, eighty foot wide, and the seventy-two by eighty is fully finished, concrete doors, ready to go for recycling equipment. And then attached to that building will be another seventy-two deep by eighty feet length tool for all the recycling equipment, the garbage trucks that hauls recycled material, your excavators, your lobo, and all that will be in the red. Any questions?
What exactly are we going to be recycling?
So, to answer your question, this grant is only building the builds. We're going to have to reach out for another recycling grant to buy the equipment to put in the building to be able to recycle the first piece of material. Um, the first thing we can start off, right off the bat with would be your tires. We recycle all of our tires in Warren County. This building will have a dock built, and we will go from lacing rubber and dry vamps to loading and open top trailers with the, with the excavator we got through the tire grant last fiscal year. And what that'll do for us, we pay for load on rubber, and we've got a ten ton minimum. A lot of times, it's hard to lace rubber at ten tons. When you go to loading and open top, you're guaranteed anywhere from fifteen to twenty tons. So we're going to double our tonnage volume on our tires on the trailer with this building. That's something right off the bat that we can get started, implement in the building to full recycle. Um, the cardboard, we've got a lot of money in cardboard, we've got a lot of money in trucking cardboard. We only, we're only getting paid ten dollars a ton for cardboard. So we are trucking maximum five tons, fifty dollars we're being paid for load cardboard all the way from Warren County to Tallahassee. So if it wasn't for the tipping fee costs at the landfill, we could never do that. So we are eating our budget alive on maintenance and repair tires, trucking, tying the driver up for two to three hours. So the first thing that me and Scott talked about, me and Terry talked about this, is implementing a baler immediately when the building is built. If we do not get a grant right off the rip for a baler, we are looking at purchasing a used baler, a smaller baler, baler just to get us a start. And when the next recycling grant comes available within the state, I feel very confident that the state will look at us because they've done invested $445,000 in the county on this building, and it would be a no burner to go ahead and fund the tarball baler that we're going to be asking for in years to come. Yes, ma'am?
That's one. Two. Where's number three, plastics?
Okay, so if we buy used baler, if we buy used baler, we would not be able to recycle plastic. The molding on the baler would not allow us to do so. If it's the county court's wishes and we are able to apply for a large grant in the future to be able to buy what they call a three-in-one auto tie baler, and that would allow us to, cardboard, we could change the molding out for plastic and then go into aluminum cans as well. You're going from a hundred and fifty thousand dollar baler for cardboard only to two fifty to three hundred thousand when you get to do multiple items under the cycle. But that would be the wishes of the safety committee, budget finance, financial management on the full county court.
But we do need the public to understand that they will have to be grading this plastic. You just don't get to throw all of your plastic away in one container.
That's exactly right.
That's where the problem with plastic recycling is. There's different kinds of plastic, and they have to be separated by hand. And the public would have to be on board with actually getting that and not putting them in the wrong bin, or it would be a labor-intensive process.
And something to add to the county executive statement there, a lot of people say the county don't recycle pla- plastic, right? You hear that often times. Well, what they don't add to that is the county tried for years to recycle plastic in Warren County at multiple different locations at our convenience centers, and the public contaminated that material, and we were not able to recycle that. My, my time here, up until last year, we accepted plastic at multiple different convenience centers, and every load was emailed and sent right back to the landfill. So you've got the haul, you're going to Tallahassee, you're going to dump the material, it's contaminated, you reload the material, and then haul it back into the transfer station. It's, it's a burden on the taxpayers altogether. So if we're going to recycle plastic, we've got to up our game, we've got to invest by what I'm going to say state grants to be able to do so. And we're going to have to really push education across the county to be able to do so.
Can you explain how many different types of plastic there are?
Oh, yes, so like Putnam County, they're recycling three different types of plastic. They've been doing this for a very long time. They've got a really nice recycling building, and I talk to the solid waste director there, and it is very difficult for Putnam County to be able to recycle plastic. If that tells you anything, they've got a lot more revenue than Warren County. They've invested their tax dollars in, to their program, and it is not breaking even. But the main goal for the waste reduction grant is to throw plastic in this building and to make it an end-use product. So we will be looking at that, and we will be trying and going down every revenue that we can to try to make that happen. But I'm going to say this, it's very hard for a small rural county to be able to do that. I, I feel like it's going to take a region coming together, creating a plan with the regional board, the four counties, and coming up with a transfer station to up that tonnage to be able to invest money from the four counties to be able to do so. But we will try our best. But first, we've got to take baby steps, we've got to get the building built. We're talking over a year out. We've gone through our FAMC meeting, the state of Tennessee, we can't do nothing, we can't send out for bid, and that is August the fourth. They will, they will line us up with a certain set of steps to take to where we can start writing our RFPs to send out. And once we get through that and get the building built, immediately the tires will go in, and I feel confident immediately the cardboard will start being built in-house to save tax dollars to be able to put forth and try to recycle the plastic. And something I left off, aluminum cans will go in this building immediately, and a can crusher will be budgeted to process aluminum cans. That's a very cheap way to process aluminum cans, you're talking twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars, and that money should be in the budget and solid waste equipment this year to go ahead and purchase that can crusher to get a top dollar for. Yes, sir, Mr. Cavett?
How much more revenue could we expect from the cardboard address failed than what we're getting now?
So me and the financial directors run some numbers on this for the last three years. So right now, you're getting paid ten dollars a ton. I don't have the numbers in front of me of what we have in that per ton. We run those numbers just and help you with that. I'll have to get back with you on that, but general idea speaking, you're getting paid ten dollars a ton, we're hauling it to Tallahassee. If we process this material in Warren County in this building, they would make a milk run and come pick up the material. That takes transportation costs out of the counter, completely out of the equation, and they're going to pay the county a hundred and ten dollars a ton for the material. Yes?
Yes, thank you for doing a good job, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you, I, there's, um, there's no I in team, you know? So we're all in this together. It takes the county executive, it takes every commissioner sitting in front of me. I can do what I can do on the state level and try to gather all my information, but at the end of the day, if we're not a team and we're not together on this and being transparent, I'm not helping the county. So we've got, you know, budget finance that's very supportive, we've got all the commission financial management. So I'm thankful to work with a good group of ladies and gentlemen on this. And I'm like Marlene, she wants that plastic, I would love to have that plastic, but I've got to make sure before I build in the budget finance and financial management that I'm not asking them for another hundred thousand dollars a year to bring in twenty thousand. I've got to make sure that it's cost effective for, for our taxpayers.
Carley, Josh and I sit and represent Warren County on the regional solid waste board. We're a team that works for, of Russer County, Coffee County, Russer County being the dominant player. They've recently, multi-million dollar transfer station that just opened up recently, and Bishop Wagner, friend of ours that serves, works for Russer County, said he would help us with our plastic recycling when we get into it because he'll be able to market by selling more, you know, he'll get, he'll get a good price for his. And, and soon as we get some way we can get ours where it's marketable, we can feed you back off of him, and he said he would help us get a better price when the time comes. So it's, it's just, it's trying to get all the pieces of the puzzle in place is what we're trying to do. Yes?
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, and, you know, you can take this building, and later on in the future, I'll hook the sale of recycling for other smaller counties, DeKalb County and Barren County of the city of Indianapolis. We might can do a partnership with them counties and make this a recycling hub and bring more revenue in to Warren County to fund the plastic recycling. This building gives us options. Right now, we don't have no options. We don't recycle the first piece of material other than aluminum cans and tires at the main office. The rest of that is recycled and hauled out of county, but at a burden to the taxpayers.
Well, when you say educate the public is one thing, but getting them to do it, to do it right, even with aluminum cans, they could trash those up and not just put aluminum cans in their plastic bags that you pick up. So then you've got to go through those. It's, you're just, I certainly will be willing to help, and I, by offering this suggestion, but the marketing of that, when you're ready to start doing it, you're going to have to have you what, ten can run around this town all dressed up, going into the schools and teaching people about, about aluminum cans and just, just all the things to, to get people to buy into it. But, I mean, I remember in the pizza box, if you had pizza on your, inside of your lid of your box, that's not going to be good cardboard. It has to go somewhere else. And how many people you know clean their pizza box lids?
And I, I want to say this.
Anyway, I appreciate so much what you've done.
Yes, thank you. I want to say this too, um, the forty-three thousand residents that we service at Solid Waste, they do an excellent job at our recycling program, um, the cardboard. The cardboard, um, the place where we haul to, Tallahassee, they will tell you our cardboard is some of the cleanest cardboard that they perceive. They love to see us for it. So that's the residents doing their job and the side operators managing and educating them. And we recycle a lot of material that goes unnoticed in the county. So we're hauling a few loads a year to waste it away, and they live. And we are recycling all of our cardboard that comes in the county. We are recycling all of our metal across all twelve convenience centers. We recycle all of our paint, we send that to Moxville, we recycle all the oil in the county, I could go on and on, electronics are fully recycled in the county. So the only thing, to be honest with you, besides bag yardage and furniture that we don't recycle is plastic. So we've got to give credit to the citizens and to you all. We have a very successful recycling program in the county, and you all are funding that, or the state wouldn't be giving us that. I'll say that. Thank you.
Mr. Cavett?
So are those buildings going to be built on Belmont Street?
Yes, yes, sir, yep. Last year, we evolved a little Auburn acre lot that runs into eleven eighty-six Belmont, that's our main office. Um, what's unique about this, and when you're on, when you're at the state conferences and you go talking about it, they all get really excited, there is a rail spur that runs through this property that if we ever have to go to rail, which in the future we will, we might not say it, but somewhere down the line in Warren County, we'll be looking at rail, and you'll have a building and a dock built right on your rail spur that you can pull a spur off of that and put right in this building and load rail cars, which is huge. And I'll say this, this recycling building has strings attached for no more than I think three to five years, don't me too, that I have to go back in the grant contract. It could be maximum five years, and after that, you've got a building sitting there ready to go.
We appreciate what you're doing, Dr. Josh, I appreciate the grants really helping the taxpayers to work out here. Nobody else has any more questions, I'll ask Clerk Call Rupp.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Carly Graham.
Yes.
Charles Dotson.
Yes.
Brad England.
Yes.
Steve Quinn.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip South.
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Any one want to change their vote?
Item number six passes eighteen to zero. Item number seven, Mr. Scott Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is another amendment for the purchase of the property that the existing convenience center sits on in Dible. It is a really good deal financially for the county, and I'd like Josh to speak to that if you would, and I put that forward a motion.
Y'all learn layout, you know, my job, boy, acting public speaker. Now, I feel like we have to give all the credit to the Green family, Mr. Larry Green and Green on this, so they've worked well with the county on this purchase. What brought this up is probably the last six months, me and Executive Bell's been working really hard on the lease agreements across the county. There is a lot of lease agreements that is very aged, twenty-plus years out of date. T-Dex given us a lot of money, so prepared for audits coming from T-Dex, so we've got to be prepared. T-Dex requires us to have an in-date lease before we own the land. So we have been really pushing hard on that, and I, what I'm having to announce, that tonight, if y'all vote for this purchase of this convenience center, that this will[1764.00] if y'all vote for this purchase of this convenience center, that this will finish us on the lease agreements. There is two convenience centers that is outstanding with River Road. They have spoke highly of the nine, and then there's one where Mr. Bill Ramsey at Boa, he has spoke highly. So this is the last convenience center that I feel that we have to purchase. And, um, going again to what Scott said, we're talking twenty-five thousand dollars for the convenience center. Well, you have to go out, if you don't do this, you have to go out and you have to find a land that does not have any neighbors because nobody wants a convenience center for something. First of all, you have to have a public hearing and then you have to go through the permitting process on getting the convenience center permitted. At that point in time, you're having to negotiate with the landowner because you can't purchase it until it's permitted. So you're looking at a year out on permitting a convenience center and then you're looking at all your underground infrastructure, all your rock bill coming in to blue top that, to pave it, and this site is ready to go. We've invested in this site over the last five years. You all have invested in it. It's got a brand new building for an office. It's got a brand new carport, compactor, steel plates. It's ready to go. It's ready to go for twenty-five thousand dollars. And I think the rock bill is close to forty thousand at the new convenience center in Morrison, if you want to put that into perspective. We're talking about twenty-five thousand for one ready to go, permanent build. And at Morrison, of course, it's larger, but we had a forty thousand dollar rock bill just for Rock Island. This is a win-win for the county.
Anybody have any questions? This will get four of them that since, uh, I took all this, we've done a smart station with everybody's air. Josh been able to get that done. Morrison, we secured that facility. We got Rock Island's lease back up and now we will be able, if this passes here tonight, to get difference up to Florida. So we appreciate you, all the work you've done on this job. Nobody has any questions? I'll ask for all the room.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Woodman?
Yes.
Carl Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Fliem?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Scott Henry?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Eddie Moffitt?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rubble?
Yes.
Paul Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Bill Stowe?
Yes.
Wayne Fisher?
Yes.
Even one more change of vote.
Item number seven passes eighteen to zero. We move on to item number eight, approval of the notice.
Ms. Liz Moonover, April Ambrose, Madison Brown, Selena Cole, Noah Gilliam, Andrew Jackson Paul the Third, Malia Luella, Alex Petio, Pamela J. Turner, Brulee Adamson, Angie L. Dodson, and Beth Eller.
Good motion by Mr. England and the second by Mr. Stafford. Any questions about the notice? All those in favor of approving the notice say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes and a noes. We'll move on to our announcements. Item number eleven, I'll look for you putting the minutes that I've reappointed Jameson Bolden to the West Val Utility District, so that needs to be spread across the minutes. Does anybody else have any announcements? All right, we'll move on to special presentations. Uh, several months ago, we had, we created the Tourism Authority and of course this weekend, it was the river cleanup and the, uh, McMemel Road Reed Club is now doing that and I thought it'd be appropriate because this is really important to the tourism of our county. So if all those involved in the river cleanup would come up front, we'd like to recognize you as I already just read in this proclamation. To honor the McMemel Road Reed Club and annual river ride and cleanup, whereas the river systems in Warren County are a vital economic driver for the prosperity of the community and have contributed to untold layers of recreation and memories to the citizens and visitors to our area. Warren County rivers are part of the very fabric of Warren County and whereas these rivers become very polluted each year, causing harm to the river ecosystem and a decrease in the quality of their appeal. And the cleaning of these waterways is a huge undertaking involving many volunteers and support from local and state organizations. And whereas in two thousand and seven, the Breakfast Road Reed Club of McMemel took on the leadership role to organize an annual cleaning of our river systems, assisting in the Barrett Fort, Collins, Hickory Creek, and Charles Creek waterways. Mr. Neil Cox was chairman of this club and played a crucial part in seeing this project from the ideal to what it is now, a community tradition. And whereas many organizations have contributed from the beginning, such as the City of McMemel, Central Church of Christ, West Warren Bio利 Utility District, Warren County Utility District, Kids of the Community, the Interact, the Tennessee Valley, and the Tennessee Wildlife Resources Agency. And Mrs. Rachel Kilbrew initiated the Dockamile River Program that led to even greater numbers of volunteers. And whereas these groups and over four thousand volunteers on the third Saturday each month cleaned over fifty miles of river each year and collected more than a hundred and thirty-two thousand pounds of garbage and over four thousand tires from our rivers and streams here in Warren County. And, and therefore, I chair a bell, County Secretary of Warren County, on behalf of a grateful community and the Warren County Legislative Party, would like to honor all of you for your efforts to keep our county beautiful and hereby declare at this day, July the twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, this River Cleanup Volunteer Day across Warren County. We want to thank these people.
(APPLAUSE).
They spent a lot of, uh, our community's had a lot of questions about issue of their taxes and I've been working on this sometime with issue and I would like to inform you as of March, issue has started paying their hotel motel tax and their sales taxes. You have the last three months of the hotel motel tax on your desk and the total of the hotel motel tax with the three months is thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents for those three months. They are also paying two hundred and twenty-one thousand, eighty-five dollars worth of property tax to Warren County. So the now issue will have some time to address at County Court. Mr. William Wilcher requests they have ten minutes. We will let them talk and then there will be questions by the commissioners on them and we'd love to have respectable questions for us. Mr. Samuel, if you can come forward to introduce some of your group.
Honorable Commissioners, Honorable Executive Bell, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening. It is a pleasure to be here and I am grateful and truly appreciative for giving me the time, the opportunity, and the consideration to speak to you on behalf of Isha Foundation. I am Dr. Usha Doshi, a board certified pediatrician, now retired, and the current president of Isha Foundation. My journey with Isha began twenty-four years ago and it has been a life transforming experience. I had the privilege of being involved with Isha Foundation since it was established here in two thousand and five and saw the transformation of it being a moving home to what it is today. We chose Warren County because it was more central to the states we were offering the program, had good weather, beautiful terrain, and of course, wonderful people and southern culture. Time flies. It has been twenty years. For the first fifteen years, we focused on building the programming facilities and were busy running programs. The last five years is when we started creating the residential opportunities for people to come to experience and live here. Isha Foundation is a five oh one C three nonprofit. Isha Institute of Inner Sciences is a main center for North America and the foundation not only runs the center here, but also does programming in thirty-four states and fifty-seven cities across the U.S. Its core mission is to offer tombs and metals from the science of yoga for physical, mental, and spiritual well-being of all people. We give program participants and visitors the ability to increase their vitality, joy, and peace through yoga and meditation and a holistic approach to well-being. Our programs are experiential in nature and are backed by studies performed by reputed universities and institutions. The foundation is run by volunteers who have benefited and experienced the value of Isha's programs. As a pediatrician, I am acutely aware of effective drugs, abuse at various levels, health, mental issues, and suicide amongst our youth, which is on the rise. This has always been important to me. I have always been impressed by the foundation's work, how yoga programs immensely impact individuals. In my experience of living here for twenty years, I've had nothing but a lot of respect and admiration for Warren County. We look forward to our mutual growth, benefit, prosperity, and will greatly appreciate your support and cooperation, which I believe will positively impact the quality of life for many in our community. Isha Foundation's mission is to create a harmonious, peaceful, and healthy community, and we wish to create the same. Thank you. I will now hand it over to Tim Ross, who will give you more details about Isha. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Doshi. Good evening, County Commissioners. Good evening, County Executive Bell. Great to be here. Thanks for the opportunity. I've been in Isha for almost three years now. I'm sure some of you may have visited the campus during that time, but there's been a good bit of development that's happened since then. So existing on our campus currently, we have our main Assembly Hall, which you see on some of the slides. It's a big dome building. In addition to that, we have, uh, three auxiliary halls, two dining halls, a kitchen complex, lodges and cabins where visitors and volunteers stay, a rejuvenation center, a welcome center, and an activity field. On the residential side, we have two eighty-four unit apartment buildings, two studio buildings, and two subdivisions of homes, one of which is in Warren County and one of which is in Van Buren County. We also have an administrative office building and, uh, two years ago, we started a school for forty-one, uh, students in grades one through five. The curriculum is following state guidelines and it's predated by the state. Special emphasis is on outdoors and nature, sports, and, uh, the arts as well. Isha has a little over seventeen thousand acres, seven, about seventy percent of that is planned for conservation, thirty percent of that is planned for development. It's split across four counties with the majority in Warren County, also Van Buren County, Suquashie County, and Runde County. The purpose of this land is to build a residential community for folks that want to live at Isha. Current plan is for two thousand residents. The much higher number that you may have heard about, twenty-five thousand is only aspirational. That was a number that was given to the, uh, utility company, uh, based on the total acreage that we own, as mapped out by the architects. Some of the early buildings were built by, uh, outside contractors. Currently, Isha is self-reforming as the general contractor. You know, the way it used to be is program, program participants and visitors would come, they would take the program and then they would go home right after that. Then we created the opportunity for residents to, uh, be a part of the program, to volunteer, and to stay on campus and even live here if they wished. There's about fifty or so full-time volunteers living full-time in Isha. And then as the demand emerged for it, uh, we have started this residential, uh, plans and, uh, this has created the opportunity for folks in various life situations to live here. Uh, the demographic is retirees, young professionals, and families working remotely. So some, some people want to, want to be here to explore yoga and explore that depth of dimension. Some people want to, uh, add volunteering and, uh, add service element to their lives. Some people want to retire at Isha and some people simply want to live and work in a peaceful and serene community. Many of the visitors and volunteers are working and college educated. I, uh, was an accountant at Ernst &amp; Young for twelve years and before that, graduated Washington University in Lexington, Virginia. Originally, I'm from Philadelphia and I'm proud to call McMemel my home now. Made some good friends here. I'm especially, uh, frequent at the Milner Rec Center and, uh, we all love the local eateries here, especially Juicy's and Pagonia's and of course Walmart and, uh, Tamaki as So fundamentally, the residential community is toward creating a conducive atmosphere to pursue yoga, meditation, and well-being. And to have it be a part of the overall center at Isha where a disciplined atmosphere is present. So maintaining the integrity of the community is quite important to us. In fact, just as important as the, uh, yoga tools and technologies themselves is the environment in which they are taught. So towards this, residents are required to have completed the introductory course and to, uh, hold, hold to the campus rules, which are no alcohol, no drugs, and, uh, no uncommitted We have plans for additional residential buildings to accommodate two thousand, as I mentioned. And the amenities that we have in the pipeline that we will make available to the public include an eighteen hall golf course, a sports complex, pickleball, a park, and a fifteen-mile, uh, hiking trail system. To date, we have not received any grant money. We're funded through individual donations and through, uh, merchandise sales and through our programming fees. We have funded the, uh, all the development ourselves up to this point. So as we continue to grow, we will, uh, continue to benefit Warren County. Since two thousand and five, our direct investment has been about a hundred and twenty million. We attract approximately one hundred thousand visitors per year. Tourism spending since two thousand and five, which includes the airfare, food, lodging, and sightseeing costs, was estimated to be a hundred and eleven million. And Isha has paid fifteen million in tax revenues since two thousand and five, mostly property and sales tax. Isha employs upwards of three hundred subcontractors and contractors. Most of them are based within a fifty mile radius of Warren County. So, uh, when looking for subcontractors, we prioritize local and then we look outward from there. And we also employ a hundred or so employees, uh, within the main center. These are across a variety of trades, including accommodations, maintenance, security, and In terms of, uh, expected future benefits, we're currently projecting for two hundred million of economic growth within the next ten years. That's based on an independent study that we contracted for. We will attract entrepreneurs in the technology space, which will provide more tech-based opportunities. And so our asset is the demographic and the population that we will bring and we expect that that will add to the economic strength of the county and the region in a big way. There are currently some constraints that, uh, that we're meeting on and working through, mainly water, electricity in the remote area in which we're doing the development. We've been in conversation with Candy Ford for a few years now and, uh, met with them recently and put forth a four million dollar commitment with Candy Ford. We're waiting to hear back on that. This is for off-site improvements for electrical. So we're getting close to triggering a public infrastructure improvement with, uh, with them and I'm excited about that. Hope to hear good news from them. For water, we're also, uh, working out ways to address it and, uh, have been doing so for, uh, the next couple phases of our development and, uh, we're, we're waiting on hearing back from WCDM Water. So like this, Isha can commit and will commit to, uh, these types of off-site improvements in, uh, in chunks as the need arises. As Dr. Doshi mentioned, obviously, uh, we are requesting your support as we continue to grow and our goal is to create a wonderful, uh, community with you together here. Thank you for your time. I'll open it up to questions and, uh, also in closing, uh, for all the current county Commissioners, we hope that you can attend the, the dinner and the tour on August fifteenth. the dinner and the tour on August fifth from five-thirty to seven-thirty. We hope to see all of you there.
Anybody have any questions?
I got, oh, me, I got one to start. Thanks for coming. I know you mentioned about, you said about two thousand residents. I may have numbered wrong there now. How many, or even just during the month or the year, how many residents do you think you get or people to go to the events that actually are from Warren County? Like a percentage, you don't want to number, but a percentage of what you think that is?
The commissioner, the two thousand is the projected number. So currently, we have about three hundred and fifty residents. We're projected for about two thousand within the next, I would say, maybe five to ten years. That's what we're building towards. And then the second point of your question was, how many for our events and for our programs, how many do you think we get from Warren County in terms of the percentage? Good question. I mean, we recently held the Yoga Fest, which is our first annual Yoga Fest, which was a family fun event. That was about a few weeks ago, maybe. And for that one, I think it was actually mostly Warren County, which we were very proud of. I'd say typically for our yoga programs, though, which happen monthly, it would probably be around five to ten percent if I had to guess.
And do you currently have any residents from Warren County that actually live at Isha, like born and raised in this area?
Definitely a lot of Tennesseans. I'm not sure about Warren County in that aspect.
Yes, sir. Years ago, and I know that after COVID, it changed everything, but Isha held several medical health fairs. Is there any plan that you may do that again in the future?
Yes, sir. Yes, Commissioner Savage, we are planning on doing the health fair this year. We're reaching out right now to great organizations to see who can partner with us on health fair, and we've been doing that, I think, pretty much annually for the past several years. I'm not sure if we did it last year and COVID was, may have been a wash, but other than that, it's been happening. Looking forward to it.
Well, I know there's a lot of, especially our elderly that are either without insurance or grossly underinsured, and it helped them out a lot. And there's always, you know, residents that just, they need help. And I understand you have a lot of people that are retired healthcare people, and they could be a lot of help in Warren County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Ms. Brennan?
Yes, sir. Since you opened in two thousand and five, do you know how much money totally you have paid to Warren County in the form of taxes and in the different kinds of taxes?
Yeah, fifteen million, Commissioner Brennan. Fifteen million.
Fifteen?
Yeah. We're exempt from federal income taxes, a 501(c)(3) organization, a nonprofit, so most of that would be property tax and state sales tax, in addition to the occupancy tax that we just started paying.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tim, your events that you have, you said you just had an event up there, I guess a few weeks ago. How many events do you guys try to plan in a month's time for the year?
Our regular programming, Commissioner, thanks for the question. Our regular programming happens monthly. These are, you know, our basic programs anywhere up from our advanced programs, attracting anywhere from, I'd say, fifty to one hundred and fifty people, maybe even more than that. It's been a, it's been a goal of ours to provide those with more frequency as the demand is there. In terms of events, which can be, you know, talks by our founder, Sadhguru, or family fun events like the Yoga Fest that we had, you know, various types of, various types of events, it just totally varies based on the time of year, based on Sadhguru's availability and that type of thing. I'd say, you know, from the three years I've been here, in terms of big events, I'd say at least three or four per year.
Just, is Isha open once, is there hours that it's open for the public to come? Because I know you have a, you guys have like a welcome center slash type bookstore where people can purchase things, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. We have a brick and mortar shop on campus. We also have an online shop for mission-aligned merchandise. And the, it's, so we're not an exclusive organization. I want to make that clear. We're, our mission, as Dr. Doshi took you through, is to provide wellness for all, for all people. So we're open from eight-thirty A.M. to eight P.M. every day, three hundred and sixty-five days per year, to anybody that wants to come, and assuming that those people can abide by the campus rules and not cause any disturbances, that's our mission, that's our goal.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
And I want to make sure, it's, no, I asked to have you do this presentation because not only I, but there were others that had questions. And, you know, one of the things, and I do appreciate the invitation to the event in August, but the biggest question I have, being a Christian, you know, and not ashamed of that at all, as far as wellness, I seek through Jesus and God for my wellness, my spiritual, emotional, physical, financial health. I still don't understand for sure what Inner Sciences is, and I guess my question would be, one, the way to put it, if I can, if it makes any sense, is do you, do you welcome all religions? Do you welcome different churches as far as the Church of Satan? What, where do you stand on this? This is the biggest question I get. I don't go to the Church of Satan, let's make sure that's clear. But that's the biggest question I get from every deity that talks to me about this in the community, is because, as you know, we prayed to God tonight before we started this meeting. So I don't want to say that we're a Christian community, but I think we're probably pretty close. That is the biggest issue that we want to know and understand better as far as where this, what is the root of it? Where does it go?
Yes, sir. Thanks for the question. I'm not a member of Church of Satan either. I wasn't aware there was a Church of Satan. I'm a member of the Episcopal Church. I've been going to church my whole life, and I've noticed that since, since starting with Isha, my Christian faith has actually strengthened. Let me try to appeal to your logical side on this one, you know? If, you know, if my mind is not working for me, if it's working against me, if my body is not working for me, it's working against me, I find it a lot harder to love my neighbor. You know, I find it a lot harder to get rid of, you know, the negative emotions that are stated in the commandments, covetousness, jealousy, anger, hatred, et cetera, et cetera. So in that way, it's helped me immensely. We're, we're not against any religion, except potentially the Church of Satan. That's not, that's not happening. There are a lot of Christians in the community of Isha. We'd be definitely open to hosting a prayer session. We'd be definitely open to hosting some sort of Bible study if the demand is there and, you know, putting across whatever's needed to allay anybody's concerns. But I can tell you that this is, there is, there is no conflict between religion, including Christianity, and yoga. Yoga is simply a utility. It's a set of tools. It's a set of technologies to get a sound mind and a sound body, and I've used that to strengthen my religious faith. And both of those things I've used to overcome a lot of challenges in my life, and appreciate the question.
There's a, got a question, kind of, we will go back to a letter that we received on June eleventh from the Isha Institute, the community residents and volunteers, and actually kind of travel back to the taxes portion, because we get a lot of questions about that. It says in here that Isha's paid approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in property and sales tax in two thousand and twenty-four with chairman, Dale, mentioned that about two hundred and twenty-one thousand of that was property taxes. That leaves a pretty big difference between two twenty-one and four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in sales tax. Is there, is there some, where we're missing two hundred thousand dollars worth of sales tax? Because if I'm not mistaken, the sales tax revenue that we've been reported is somewhere around the thirty-nine thousand, thirty-eight thousand dollar mark.
So the two twenty-one thousand is property tax paid by the foundation for the, for the buildings at the foundation? And that's, those are, those are invoiced tax payments that are, you know, determined by the property assessor. So we pay everything that we're legally obligated to pay. Then there's an additional fifty, fifty thousand, Commissioner Lofit, which is property tax paid by individual homeowners living within the Isha community. We have a community called Isha Village, which has, I think, twenty to thirty homes. And that is located within Warren County, so that is, that makes up part of the delta. And then the rest of it, to get to the, I think you said four fifty, is a hundred, about a hundred and forty-three in sales tax.
Okay, and so the Tennessee Department of Revenue figure that I have here that was paid in two thousand and twenty-four is about thirty-eight thousand dollars. So I'm assuming that one seventy-six is there? Is the rest of it going somewhere else than Warren County or?
What's the one seventy-six?
You mentioned that there was the two-eleven plus the fifty, which leaves us about one seventy, nine hundred and something thousand dollars.
And I'm just getting to the four fifty that was in the letter, right? So the, so the, it'd be about a little over two seventy in property tax plus a hundred and forty-three in sales tax. So that's the number that should be in the open letter.
Okay.
And then the delta might be occupancy tax that you just started paying.
Yeah, I was, when I got to four fifty, I've got the two-eleven plus fifty, that's two sixty, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And then?
Open letter also two is four counties.
Okay, so we're talking, yeah, this four fifty is over four counties, not just Warren County. Yeah, since it was addressed to Warren County commissioners, I figured we were talking about Warren County numbers.
Mr. Dot?
I wouldn't go say nothing tonight. I promised my wife I would, but she ain't here. My question is this, thank you for paying your taxes. That's, that's good. You need to do that. My question is, you've been here for twenty years. Why now? Why haven't y'all come out and done this before now?
In terms of, in terms of paying occupancy taxes?
No, as far as coming to the county commission meetings and making yourself known and coming out of the woods in the mountain.
Gotcha.
Why haven't you done this before now? Why did it take you twenty years to do it?
Yeah, thanks for the question. The truthful and boring answer is that we've just been so busy trying to build this place up. As Dr. Doshi mentioned, we started from a mobile home way before I even knew about Isha. This was twenty years ago, as you mentioned. And so it's just taken everybody's hundred percent responsibility and energy to be at the center, trying to figure out how to build this place up to where it is now. And we've gotten to a point now, we're kind of at the middle stage, and we have a little bit of leeway with the volunteers, the people here. We know what we're doing, and so we, you know, we listen to it, and it's high time we came out and started to talk and let you know what we're doing.
Okay, so it took you twenty years, twenty years to say hello. I mean, I'm just, I'm just being honest with you, brother. I'm just as honest as the day is long. I'm a Pentecostal preacher and pastor, so I understand where these guys are coming from. It's just, I'm just wondering why it took you so long to make yourself know. We know, we knew you was up there. Just, you know, why didn't you step out earlier? I understand you get the infrastructure and everything together, but still, we got something down here in the South called Southern Hospitality. You stepped out and said happy.
Yes, sir.
Did I understand you right? You said that's just about three hundred and fifty residents of Isha right now?
Yes, sir. That's right.
Oh, I'm sorry to clarify, but I'm sure I understood in your, of course, you've got hopes of the two thousand. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I got one thing to, one more thing to ask. I've been asked by a bunch of people, and I like to address stuff from where it originated from. And anytime I go and use more rumors, anytime rumors happen, I like to find out where it originated from. So, and if you can't speak on this, you don't have to, but it's a question that a lot of people in Warren County is asking. So, and I have to pronounce the leader's name. Is it Sadhguru?
Yes.
So has there been any previous, past, current allegations of any type of abuse or to be sexual, physical, anything regarding that? Because it has been asked of me, and I don't, I don't know the answer, because when you have some, something as big as what you guys are doing and what you've, what you've explained, which is great, and many, we've talked before, that, that's a big part, just as important as them talking about the Christianity part. We want to know what that leader, if there's something like that, Warren County residents kind of deserve to know. So I'm just asking you plain now, is there something that we need to know that, is it history or the past, or it's coming up, or others, in other states have been allegations made, not just of him, but anybody else that's maybe the top official or management in, in the Isha Foundation?
Yeah, absolutely nothing. So none of those allegations are true, none of them have any basis in truth. They're all totally false, and that's what we're mitigating right now as part of a civil lawsuit for defamation against two people that were ex-Isha, brought forth their sexual allegations against us. I don't know why exactly. Maybe has that been anger, jealousy? Our founder, Sadhguru, has, you know, he lived there in a suitcase for forty years to build this place up. So if any of that stuff was going on with, with him or anybody at the top here at Isha, none of what we're doing would work, because it takes a certain amount of integrity to pass down these types of tools and technologies and to do the yoga.
May I follow up? Just, thanks for asking. Does Isha have their own kind of internal legal process for handling? You said y'all were kind of going through that process of work with you, all that. I know you guys have, you know, own attorney stuff, but is that part of it? And if it is founded or unfounded, would that be something that Isha would let Warren County residents or even the commissioner, like, no? If it's founded to be, now, I'm not saying it is, but if it's founded to be true with Sadhguru or anybody, would that be something that Isha, you guys, would let us know what's founded or what's not founded?
Yeah, maybe we have our, we have our internal process where we're with the attorneys that we hired to answer the first part of your question, the second part of your question. Yeah, no matter what happens, we'll, you'll, you'll become aware.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is, are the residents that arrive there required to sign a non-disclosure agreement? And if so, why?
Commissioner, thank you for the question. I'd just like to set a little bit of context to that, the non-disclosure agreement, whatever we signed, which all of us signed, including myself and many others who've been part of this for many years. As Tim said, that there is a certain fundamentals and certain fundamental values that we uphold as far as how we offer ourselves to volunteer and build this organization and what it does and the kind of work that it does. And one of the basic rules that we set is that when we say that we are coming to volunteer and when we are offering ourselves our time and our energy and our talents, we don't try to sort of make that into, into a business proposition or sort of make it, make use of it for personal gains and stuff. So in that regard, as far as this particular center here, the Brick and Motor Center, always, you know, where we started and we were in the process of acquiring lands nearby, especially the contiguous lands, which is important for us to create that ecosystem and that environment that we want to create. So we, we made sure that anybody in the management, anybody at the top, people who make decisions at the management level, we never ever invested anything, tried to buy up land because we know what's coming up, what we're going to do, and where the value is going to go. When we bought the initial parcels, we bought it for eight hundred dollars upon the mountain. That was a land crisis. And today, it's probably five, six thousand dollars an acre. This has purely happened because of Isha's presence and what we have done and the value that we have built. But we don't want the guardians of this organization and this activity. We don't want to turn around and make use of it and take it for ourselves. So there is a certain fundamental value we have built, and we just make sure that people, volunteers who come, who want to get involved, and we trust everybody. We welcome everybody with open arms, but you don't know until somebody proves otherwise that they're there for the wrong intentions. So just to safeguard this, the common work that we're all doing, pitching and spending twenty, thirty years for lives, this is my thirty years of volunteering for this foundation, simply because at sixteen or eighteen, I felt what I'm going through in my life, and somewhere this pulled me out of that. And I understood what it means to, you know, make this happen for other people, anybody that's, you know, needing this. So we have held this sacred in our hearts, and we put it in safeguards to make sure that this is protected, and that's exactly what we have done. this is protected, and that's exactly what we have done. So when people come saying that they're volunteering and they're becoming part of the management or planning and all those things, we just want to make sure that they can't just simply, you know, take advantage of it. So that's what the agreement does, that's what it is.
All right. I want to thank you for coming and explaining to the community. Brad, do you have a question?
Yeah. So if someone comes and wants to be a resident of Esha, a permanent resident, are there requirements for them to do that? I mean, do they turn it over to their possessions to Esha? I mean, what are the requirements to be a permanent resident?
Yes, Commissioner, tell us. I think that's one of the misunderstandings or sort of maybe corrupted rumors that's going around. People have to turn over everything, all their possessions and things. It's not true. People come and they can, you know, build their own, they, there are people, like Tim was saying, there are probably about thirty, forty of us are studying, sort of afforded, you know, we were able to afford to put our time fully in running this center and stuff, but there are many others out of the three hundred and fifty people, probably another three hundred people, they have their jobs and whatever else they do, so they keep their possessions. So it's purely voluntary, and any contributions that they make, all these revenues that's being talked about and tax returns being questions that's coming out of it, I'd like to maybe just talk about that a little bit. Yes, our foundation, it doesn't, doesn't just run programs here in this center, we run programs across thirty-five other states. There are thousands of volunteers who are involved in running programs everywhere. So all the revenue that is happening, what for the foundation, is through all those programs happening all over the country. And we were able to raise the funds, all these funds that we've invested into Warren County, to the center, it comes from all over the country, basically. And people who contribute, these are all individual contributions, pretty much, we don't receive any large contributions or anything from corporates or government or anything so far. These are individuals who benefit, and they open their heart and give, and that's how this happens, sir.
Got it. One last question. As a nonprofit and being invested in our community, can you give some examples of very specific examples of what Esha is doing inside of Warren County? Not with programs on the mountain, but what we're doing for our seniors, for our kids, for our school-aged children, for our at-risk youth that I've seen online that Esha is invested in these, you know, these different things, but I've had people ask, and they don't see the fruit of that inside of this community from Esha. So if you've got some specific examples of how we're helping seniors and children and things like that in our community?
Yes, sir. So we have, you know, volunteered time to time in different programs like River Train Hop and a few other programs, but to be honest, yes, like the first fifteen years have been kind of, have been stretched to the limits as far as running the center, and it has been a growth process also and a growth phase also. So, and just in the last three, four years that we are getting to have more residents and volunteers, we are getting to have more bandwidth to get involved and even come down and get to participate. We are looking to do our part in the community as much as we can, and I think we have, as of today or yesterday, we have extended a grant to the children of the community for the play field or park that they would like to build the facilities. Like this, there are several things that we have in mind, and we will look for appropriate projects and things that would align, and we recognize the need for it and continue to support.
Mr. Kelly, one more question.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are a nation founded on Christian principles and Christian values. Those will be and should be defended by every American, no matter what ideology we have. Having said that, would Esha allow someone to go up to your, to Esha up there and offer a Bible study to the residents there?
Yes, yes, sir. And we are, in fact, probably where it's in the discussions, as more than other faiths, there are people of different faiths, of course, and we do have a lot more people on the Christian faith, faith, and, you know, probably building a church, and whichever church wants to come and offer their services, we'll be open to them. Just fundamentally, I like to state this, I know Tim kind of responded to that. Faith is not, this is not against any faith, or it doesn't take away from it, the value of faith, it doesn't. Simply put it in simple words, that this is a technology which happens at a different large realm or a different layer of our life. And this is about sort of sharpening body, mind, emotion, and the energies to its full potential. That's what this technology is about. And that's exactly even coming from a Chris, sorry, Hindu faith by birth, and it hasn't conflicted with that, and it hasn't even conflicted with any other faith. You know, in fact, I have a lot more understanding and reverence to every other faith that have come across since then, since I've taken program. So I can assure you that this is not just something that we are saying for a word's sake, this is truly what this is. If, if Christian, Christian faith teaches, which I have the little studies I have done about, through my friends, Christian friends, and what I've heard in the process of growing up, love their neighbor, it comes more effortlessly, that it's not as strong.
Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to piggyback off of Commissioner Rippey's question. When he was asking about the allegations, do you all have a temple in India also, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, yes, sir. I think as far as the allegations go, if, and I know we can't believe everything we read on the internet, but if you Google Esha, India, that's where the bulk of the allegations come from, and they're very strong allegations. And that's what I think is giving this community and certainly this body of government pause to pay more attention to what is going on at the Hill, and it is, to Commissioner Dodson's point, it is suspect that all of a sudden, when we are, become more aware of what is going on or what is alleged to go on, then, then it becomes more public from your end to try to bring yourself forward. So to that, I would ask you to speak to those allegations about the institute in India, and if you can. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Ross, these allegations are not necessarily new in that sense. Always it's been there, okay, in various forms and various types, simply because, you know, I'm just saying this because I've been involved with this for many years, almost two, three decades, and the India Center is something that we visit every year, even right from my workdays and stuff, like we take time off and we spend significant amount of time there as well. And as far as, you know, I can say, this center here, which since two thousand and five, even before that, we have started the programs ten years before that, since ninety-seven, I can say with a certainty and confidence that we have run this with the utmost integrity, that it is worthy of putting my life into it, okay? I can't say, I don't know how else to express this. You all should understand what it means to put your life into something, because this is not something I close my eyes and walk into it. Every day, you know, we sort of, you know, always the question is that, is it worthy of putting your life? Every day, it's a daily question, and every day it's been worth it. And these allegations are not just about India Center, it's been made about this center also, you might have heard that as well. Just when they say bodies are buried in Esha campus, that's about this center. And I'm sure, you know, law enforcement is here and, you know, there was one person that came without informing anybody, it's a large campus, it's a seventeen thousand plus acres, it's about almost twenty, twenty-five square miles, okay? And somebody drives in, they're supposed to check him at the welcome center, and then if they need to go hiking or taking a program or whatever they want to do, then they do it. But this person comes, parks, and just walks into the woods, and whatever he was going through, he took his life, and nobody knew about it. And three months later, there was a missing person reported in Nashville where he belonged, where he lives, and that inquiry comes, and I think sheriff's office came, and they looked for it, and they wanted to bring a search and rescue. We said, fine, please search, and they searched the whole land for a couple of days, and they didn't find anything, they went back. So again, six months, not six months, maybe four, five months later, we, you know, the next project, that area that we wanted to build something, we put a surveyor to go and survey the land for contour lines, the surveyor stumbles upon this corpse, fully, whatever, decomposed, and we informed the police, the sheriffs, and they come, they, you know, secured the site, and I think other investigative agencies came, they fully investigated and closed the case because there was suicide note by the person, and he had his own weapon and stuff, and he was going through depression, whatever, right? So they take this and they spin this into bodies up on the mountain. What are you, what are people supposed to think? So this is what's been happening, and this is how they've taken different situations of people's names, and they spin it into all kinds of fantastic stories. And we are trying to explain to people, we are trying to counter these rumors and stuff, and especially one couple with whom we welcomed, very sort of with open arms, just like any other volunteers who want to come and contribute and be part of it. For whatever reason, they had their own interest, maybe they had their different interest in what we are setting up this place for, and, you know, in their own disgruntlement, they've started this kind of things. So this is, I would say, the pain of growth and being popular or become big or whatever that is, there is a certain level of jealousy and disgruntlement, whatever, right? So that's all I can say from my own experience, and we can say that this center, we invite all of you to, even if you can't make it on August fifth, please come whenever you can, and we'll give you a tour, we'll give you whatever you want to see in the campus, this is an open book, and there is nothing for us to hide, there is nothing secretive. This is a simple life we are living up there in the mountain, and we've been just extremely busy for fifteen years, not just running program here, all over the country, and just a small band of people managing all that. So now we have a little bit more bandwidth, we, we will come down here, we will get involved, we want to get involved, because this is not a community outside of community or certain exclusive community. We want to be part of it. And these twenty years of being here, our personal experience has been, maybe there hasn't been a whole lot of interaction and relationship, but it's been accordial and pleasant experience of being here, and we would like to make that possible for, reciprocate the same thing for everyone, and do our best to the community that we live in and we become part of.
All right. We want to thank you for coming down and answering our questions in the presentation.
Thank you.
I'll now accept a motion, Mr. President. Stand in the second.